All right, I think we're ready to start. I'm gonna call us to order. Summer, will you call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Present.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Stallings?
Here.
Commissioner Dennis?
Here.
And Mayor Mason?
Here.
All present.
Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda. They want to have anything they want to talk about before we start?
I don't.
Okay. Study items. 3.1, update on the effort to reseed the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and kick it off. Mayor, we've had some challenges at the wastewater plant. And we have, as you may know, we have our wastewater plant is managed by a third party, the Stover Group, and has been for about 15 years. They do a wonderful job for us, and Dr. Ross Stover is in the audience. And between him and Scott, we can certainly tell you what has happened. What you've seen is probably a report in the paper, about two weeks ago about a fish kill. Certainly, there's more to all that, but I think we've made strides since then. And Dr. Ross Stover, as I think about it, not all of you have met him or seen him. So, Dr. Ross, why don't you come on up and introduce yourself to everybody? Tell us what's happened and what we're doing about it, and hopefully, things are getting back to normal.
We're getting there. All right, well, good evening. Thank you for having me. So, I'm Ross Stover. I'm Vice President of the Stover Group. We're based out of Stillwater, Oklahoma. We've been operating the facility since June of 2014. And so, we've kind of seen some issues like this in the past, but this is probably the most severe issue. I would say this is the most severe issue we have seen or dealt with from our time here at the plant. So, on Tuesday, May 20th, we had operators report some foaming coming into, or foam on our influent wastewater coming into the plant. And so typically, when we see foam in that point, it's, especially if it's kind of white and fluffy, it's what we would call like a surfactant or kind of a soapy type foam. And so, we had operators report foam coming into the plant. We have seen that before, and so, we just said, okay. We have some tests that we can do on site. They're not, there's much better test methods out there to really determine what these compounds are. So, we have a few general tests that we can run, but they're very basic. So, we ran some of those. The test method we did have on site didn't really pick much up. And so, that evening, we started seeing effluent ammonia concentrations come up. So, effluent wastewater leaving the plant going to the creek. And so, we started seeing effluent ammonia concentrations increase on Tuesday, the May 20th, so the evening of May 20th. On Wednesday, we saw increased ammonia concentrations from the day before in our final effluent composite sample. And again, we've kind of seen this before, but we were kind of wanting to see if it would recover, if it would dilute out. So typically, when we see inhibition or toxicity issues on biological treatment processes, it's concentration based. So, it's milligrams per liter. It's a concentration that causes an impact, and what we refer to as a threshold concentration. So, as something concentrates up that can have an inhibitory or toxic effect, it eventually reaches a threshold concentration, and that concentration or above, that's when we start to see those impacts. So, Wednesday, the 21st, we started seeing, or we were seeing definitely elevated effluent ammonia concentrations. That night, Chris Luer, our site supervisor, contacted me, said that a fish kill had been reported. And so, I notified DEQ. I'd called in, they have a bypass hotline. I called into that. It didn't really seem like the right route. So, I notified a contact at DEQ by email. I just notified him that we'd had the fish, or we'd had the fish kill reported, and that I just wanted to speak with them. So, ended up speaking with him Thursday morning. We were still discharging at this point. And I spoke with him. He recommended me contact the district engineer, so I contacted him. And we decided to go ahead and divert influent away from the treatment plant. And the way we do that, we actually just shut off the influent pumps and let the wet well at the treatment plant back up, and that forces flow to divert over to the storm pond, which is over at the old plant. So, we just started diverting to the old storm pond and just basically holding. Water was just going into storage at that point. So, what's interesting, though, is the chemicals that caused this, they were already in the system. And so, our system, even though we weren't flowing in, it just continued to degrade. So, we just, by Thursday afternoon, evening, we had just completely lost nitrification, which is the process where bacteria convert ammonia over to nitrite and/or nitrate. And that helps us meet our effluent ammonia limit for the plant. So, at that point, sometime Thursday afternoon, evening, is when we stopped discharging from the wastewater plant out to Skeleton Creek. And like I said, we were diverting flow, just holding it over at the storm pond, but we saw biological processes continue to degrade in the wastewater plant. So, we just monitored the plant for several days through the weekend. And of course, I was talking with our guys every day, watching the data. And I spoke with them on Monday, and we were running out of room in the storm pond. So, we talked with DEQ on Tuesday morning. We had some basins offline at the treatment plant. So, DEQ agreed that we could go ahead and start flowing back through the plant whenever we needed to. And we agreed, we're just gonna hold off till the last minute. We were also gonna use offline basins that were empty to also store additional volume to prevent us discharging as well. So, we finally ended up discharging about Tuesday night, and I'll back up. So, the week of the upset, we've got labs that we've worked with in Tennessee and Texas that do detailed, like, chemical analysis. So, for surfactants and paracetamidic acid, those are sanitation chemicals used in a lot of facilities for very heavy sanitation processes. And then, we've got a lab in Houston that we use for bacterial speciation and quantification analysis. And so, what we saw from the lab in Tennessee was we had very high concentrations of cationic surfactants, and those were, the majority of those were quaternary amines. These are very strong disinfectant chemicals or sanitizer chemicals. So, we had not only very high concentrations, I say very high. So, to give you an idea, quaternary amines can cause inhibition as little as three to five milligrams per liter. That's a pretty low concentration. We saw it anywhere from approximately five and a half to almost 13 milligrams per liter on the influent coming in. In our biomass sample that we sent them, we showed almost 25 milligrams per liter. So, I'd have to do a little bit of homework, but I think what happens, I think these compounds adsorb to the biomass, and then they'll just ultimately continue to concentrate up as they're coming into the system. So, at that concentration, that's a high enough concentration to cause significant impacts to treatment performance. And then, the bacterial speciation analysis, what that confirmed was our nitrifiers, the process that, or the bacterial group or type that helps basically reduce our effluent ammonia concentrations, we had a population of almost zero percent. So, our nitrifiers were almost completely wiped out. And so, this reseeding update, so what we did is we worked with the company that did the speciation analysis. They actually have nitrifier seed cultures that you can buy. And my recommendation was to go that route versus getting seed sledge from another municipality, because you can get seed sledge from another municipality, and you can also get a lot of their operations problems from their biomass. So, my recommendation was to go with this seed product. So, we started, we added that on Friday. That would have been, what would that have been, last Friday, the 30th, I believe? 30th, 31st? And so, we added that on Friday. We started seeing reduction in effluent ammonia concentrations. We got as high as almost 50 milligrams per liter. Part of that is the ammonia coming into the plant, which averages about 27 milligrams per liter coming in. The reason it was higher going out is because the plant sat offline. The biomass will go into decay. If you're not feeding the bacteria, it'll actually go into decay. And you'll release organic nitrogen compounds that will break down and form ammonia, and that will actually increase your effluent ammonia concentration. Today, we just ran a grab sample before I left the plant to come here, and we were down at about 9.7 milligrams per liter. So, we're trending down. We're making some progress, and I'm hoping that over the next few days, we continue to see those numbers drop and fall. So, we're normally on effluent ammonia concentrations, just to give you an idea of how well the plant performs. We're normally below our non-detect limit, which is .12 milligrams per liter. So, we're normally non-detect on effluent ammonia. But we just experienced a complete loss of nitrification. And we do, like I said, we do have some analysis that shows us quaternary amines compounds that are just very, very strong sanitizer chemicals.
Are we discharging now?
Yes, we are discharging. So, we're discharging now. Effluent BOD concentrations are pretty close to normal. Effluent TSS concentrations are single-digit, which is where we're typically at. So, the BOD process is typically a process that will recover very fast. The nitrification process requires a specific group of bacteria to perform that process. And so, that, the only way to really recover that within a reasonable amount of time was to go with a seed product like we did. But that is showing progress as well. And so, our goal right now is we just have to operate the plant in a way to allow those nitrifying bacteria to grow and accumulate in the system and just continue to bring that nitrification rate up.
I have a question for you. Did we have a plant malfunction, or do we have an influent problem?
According to the data, I would say it's an influent problem. We had no mechanical issues, no aeration issues.
Okay. Have we made any effort to find what the source was?
So, the analysis that we had samples shipped out for, it doesn't just tell us it's quaternary amines. It actually gives us very detailed chemical names, very specific chemical names. And so, we've shared that data with the city. And as far as finding out where that came from, I can't say that I'm heavily involved in that process.
Who would be? Who would we talk to to find out?
So, my recommendation on that, for one, these chemicals, these sanitizer chemicals, you've got to have them in a significant volume on site to be able to discharge them to a city plant that's treating six to nine million gallons a day and get up to these kind of concentrations. So, it's got to be somebody in that discharges to the sewer collection system that's got these kind of chemicals in a significant quantity. And my recommendation would be for the sites that would be, that could potentially have these chemicals, request safety data sheets, and you can review and you can match up these chemical names.
And I could jump out there and say, we've already been doing that. I think we've received a lot of them.
Okay.
And I don't know if we've shared them with you, but we certainly, we have an environmental specialist that's going out. We do believe that this, there was something that came from one of our industrial customers or a combination of customers. And based on your recommendation, we've asked for several safety data sheets. I don't know that we've got a conclusive answer yet. I don't think we do. But we're can, also, aren't we still waiting on some test results, or have you gotten all your test results back?
I think we've gotten everything that we have submitted, yeah.
I know, we're taking, we're taking test results, I think. Scott, you want to talk about what Stephanie's been doing?
Our environmental specialist, Stephanie Cervantes, you might have met her. She was talking about the Earth Day that we had a few council meetings ago, but she's been working, she's been working overtime since all of this started, going into different lift stations and different collection points. And towards the end of last week, I know that she loaded up a whole pickup bed full of samples and held some back for the plant, so that, you know, if we needed to run any additional testing, once we recognized a chemical, we could still have some samples from some of the places that we took. She ran those to Oklahoma City. So, she's been taking samples. She's been sending letters out to people, and like Gerald said, we've received a few requests back and...
When does she expect the results of the samples?
I don't know that we know the answer to all that. We're still, still working on that. So, but yes, to answer your question, we do not believe it's a problem that we have to plant. We believe that chemicals, and then just in a very large quantity, large enough to compromise the plant, were discharged, either from one or multiple sources. We're working hard to figure out who it is, because certainly, we're also looking at our ordinance and what we can do, because I don't know what DEQ's gonna do yet either. They may, I'm sure we're gonna get a notice of violation or something that may come with fines. You could talk to us about that. But we're thinking, if we can nail it down in accordance with our ordinance, we're looking to put measures in, we all are looking to put measures in place to try to keep it from happening again. But do we have all the answers now? No.
So, if we were to find the source of this, would then those fines and infractions against us be pushed onto them as opposed to us?
No, I think that we would, our fines would probably be based on what we already have in place in our ordinance, although that's always subject to change.
No.
But I, and I don't know what DEQ, I don't know. Have you had a situation like this? What do you expect DEQ's going to do eventually when they figure out? And it's a big organization, and they figure out, with all the information we're sharing with them, they're gonna do something probably, right?
Well, I think the thing is, the key is share the information with them. Obviously, it's a municipal wastewater treatment plant. You've got an entire sewer collection system coming into it. And so, you can have people discharging legally, you can have people dumping illegally. The deal is with the chemicals, we found that I'm confident are the cause of our issues. I would, I can't say that I've seen many pre-treatment programs where those are typically regulated. It's not that they can't be, it's just that it's probably not typically on the radar. Normally, you deal with conventional compounds, BOD, TSS, oil and grease, things like that. And so, I think we just have to talk with the state, explain everything to them, and then just kind of see how they want to handle it, because it, it's obviously something coming into the plant that was outside of the city's control. And so, it's just a matter of how they choose to respond. I don't know.
One good, well, I don't want to say good, but one fortunate thing is in this next coming year's budget that you approved, we do have a study that will be funded to help us determine what some of our local limits should be and set stricter local limits on what comes into our plant. So, we'll get that study started, and hopefully, they'll come up with some good recommendations. We can give them our experience that we've just all gone through as we look at the study, and hopefully, that will really help us to be a little more strict on local limits.
If our environmental control person took samples at multiple lift stations throughout the city, we can narrow that down exactly where that come from, right?
I would hope so. Yes. Because your sewer collection system is like a tree where the wastewater plant is the trunk, and it's branching out from there. So, if you can go up and you start hitting lift stations, and you start veering off and following that trail, yes.
But that's only if they're continuing to discharge. If they're not discharging anymore, the flow could all be gone. You'll never find it. No, but I did some checking on that. Every one of these chemicals have to have a certificate, right? They can trace these chemicals back to the lot that they come out of the manufacturer from. That's assuming you have some of that chemical. Well, we took, we took, we took samples. We got that in the lab. I understand that, but you can't do it backwards now, because it's all washed through. No, but they have to have a certification where they took possession of this chemical. We're not talking about the same thing. I agree with you, what you're saying, and that's right. They do have to have a certification for it. But if you went out there today, you probably wouldn't see something in one of those lift stations.
I understand that, but it was my understanding that she went out to the lift stations and took samples.
We're gonna do our very best. Nobody wants to find out who done this. This is like a CSI episode for us. We want to nail somebody if we can, but we can't willy-nilly go and, we do have samples. Hopefully, we'll have enough to prove this out. We're gonna use your expertise, Dr. Stover, and we're gonna do what we can do. I would tell you, we have our suspicions, but we can't just run around. Obviously, this is a major, significant event. I believe that we've responded in the best way that we can, and now, we're working very hard, because nobody wants to keep this from happening any worse than we do. So, we'll do everything we can.
What did it cost to reseed? What's our expense on this?
So, roughly $8,400.
Eighty-four hundred?
Yeah.
Plus whatever bad press we got and all that stuff, that we were killers of the fish.
When did Stephanie start sampling?
I believe that Tuesday.
Carol, we're not gonna try to solve all this right here. We will get that together, and internally, we can visit with you about that. Let's do it that way.
This is a study session. We get to talk about stuff.
You bet, but I don't know that we have...
And Gerald, I expect an answer on this. I want to find out where this come from.
You're gonna get the best answer we can give you, because if we can nail it down to one company, we will. And we will follow up and show you the evidence and...
And if we don't have enough ordinances in place, I think we can help that.
I think we have, I think we have, I think we have a good ordinance in place, is what Carol tells me, but I think we need to review it and see. That's what Scott's talking about with this study. So, I want to be clear. We want to find who did this.
I don't think there's any doubt about that.
Well, and I will say this. So, what you, what you'll see with pre-treatment ordinances is you'll have, you'll have specific limits for specific compounds. So, you'll specify, like I mentioned earlier, BOD, TSS, oil and grease, pH ranges, and then you'll likely have some general ordinances that say things like, you shouldn't have visible foam in your effluent, and meaning for the pre-treatment plants or the facilities around town. And, you know, you can't discharge anything of a toxic nature, or something like that. So, you'll likely have some language there that this would be captured more under general language. The thing is, we have analysis for very specific compounds. So, it's a matter of if you choose to update specifying compounds, but my guess is you have more general language that would ultimately cover this.
I have, I have three questions I wanted to ask. For the, there are fish that obviously didn't die in this fish kill, and maybe were moving on downstream. Would those fish be toxic? Because there are people that fish in that creek.
No, I just recommend they don't eat the dead ones.
Okay. Next question, how does it affect the groundwater?
So, the, ultimately, you're, you're doing surface discharge, you're flowing into Skeleton Creek. As you flow downstream, that water's just gonna become more and more dilute. It's not, I would say groundwater impact is negligible. And so, the issue with the fish kill is the chemicals, the toxic chemicals that entered the plant, what they did was they shut down a biological treatment process that converts ammonia over to other compounds. Ammonia, and the reason you have an ammonia limit, ammonia by itself is toxic to fish at a certain concentration and above. And so, it's, these, these chemicals coming in, they would have not only come into the plant, but they would have also passed out of the plant. And so, you've got chemicals passing out of the plant that'll cause an impact. The ammonia by itself will be an impact to the fish. And then, like I said, as you flow downstream, you get more tributaries, that those concentrations just continue to dilute. So, the, and you're gonna have ammonia in, naturally occurring in streams anyways, just at much smaller concentrations. So, flowing downstream, it's gonna dilute groundwater. I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
Okay. Because there are people asking about that. And then, the last one I had was, going forward from this point, is there anything you would have done differently, like the minute you see the foam coming in, maybe start the process of investigating? Because it sounded like from your timeline, some time passed that maybe prevented some of this.
Yes. So, like I mentioned, we've seen foam on the headwork side or the influent side of the plant before. We've seen times we've had foam coming out of the second story of the headworks that was so bad. And so, I think had we, I think what I would do in the future is I would divert upon seeing that faster. And so, there's, there's an issue with that too, though, that once it enters the plant, to get under those threshold concentrations, you have to dilute it out. So, where we're very fortunate with the plant, you know, the plant is new in terms of a municipal wastewater plant. And so, we have extra capacity. So, normally, we're operating almost half of the basins of the facility, and the other basins are offline, just sitting idle. So, the benefit there is, and that's one of the things we actually did to try to get the plant back online and help recovery, is we filled a basin with tap water, so about 2.75 million gallons worth of tap water. And then, started mixing the biomass in there to help dilute those concentrations. So, I would, I would say, I'm probably, looking back now, I would divert faster, and I would immediately start dilution. We also, so the quaternary amines compounds, they fall under a cationic surfactant category. And so, we did get some test kits in that we can test for cationic surfactants following this. I can't say that they're the best test method, but they're an indicator, and so, we can use those. The proper test methods involve very equipment, or very expensive laboratory equipment, so it's not something that I would say is an investment you want to make to have that on site. But we have simple test kits we can use to try to indicate that. So, I would say, looking back, that would be, because one of the things we'll be doing is we'll be writing up a procedure for future situations, not, not only just for us, but also to show DEQ that we have a response to this, and we have a plan to handle this better in the future. But yeah, divert and start, like, increase testing frequency, increase monitoring on the facility, dilution processes, stuff like that.
All right. Thank you.
I do have a question. How would this get into the system anyway? Would it be from a floor drain, or a building, a toilet, stormwater sewer, or what?
Not a toilet. So, these, like I said, these are very strong sanitation chemicals. So, they're, they're used in industrial processes where sanitation is critical. So, and again, to get these kind of concentrations into this, into the volume of wastewater we see here at the city plant, you'd have to have a pretty good amount. So, floor drains, yes. We work a lot with food and beverage production facilities, and so, there are techniques that they'll do, because they're preventing bacterial growth. that they'll do because they're preventing bacterial growth in their processing areas. And so they'll line floor drains with these compounds. They'll have areas where you're stepping into production areas, where you're stepping into these chemicals and you're sanitizing your shoes as you're coming into the production area and stuff like that. So yes, you know, big sanitation wash downs. If dry cleanup is not done, you can see a lot of this enter the waste stream.
So is this chemical used to like clean machinery and that type of thing?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
From an ordinance standpoint, let's say we do find that it is actually multiple industry or multiple companies, but they're within the guidelines that we've set forth. Being that we are a growing community, are we going to need to lower that threshold as we grow?
So I think the thing to do first is, is find out who has and would be using these compounds. I don't think you're going to find these compounds in, in volumes significant enough at, say like a mom and pop type place, like a local restaurant or something like that. But the thing to do, so what we saw was, again, quantary means, there are, there are chemicals out there that will actually bind these up to minimize or eliminate their impacts. And we see that used at a lot of pre-treatment facilities that have their own biological treatment processes. And so they, they're doing these sanitation processes in the production plant. They then add, you'll see them called like Quatkill or Quatblocker. Different manufacturers have all their own names. And some work better than others. And so they'll add those prior to their pre-treatment processes so that they don't impact their own biological processes, much less downstream. So there are things that can be done to bind these chemicals up and prevent inhibitory or toxic impacts from them.
Do you have any projections on the amount of quantity that had to have gone in that to reach those levels you're talking about? Was that a 55 gallon drum?
I'd, so yes and no. I can calculate out and tell you the exact mass because based on the flow we had for that day and the concentrations we have in our influence, I can tell you the exact pounds that were used. How much, I haven't done that. So how much was actually used those days, I don't know. But you can calculate out and you can tell those exact masses, yeah.
That certainly might eliminate a lot of places if we knew how much it was put in there.
Well, and I, I'm familiar with the city and I have my own suspicions of where it could have possibly come from. So.
Yeah. Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Stover. We appreciate it. Thanks for what you do out there.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Item 3.2, discuss downtown lighting project with OGN E. Michael?
Yeah, Michael, I'm going to go ahead and introduce this topic. This is, this whole project is a result of the franchise agreement that I think went into effect. I think it was January of '22. Might have been '23. Anyway, we've been working on this project for quite some time. And Scott's done quite a bit of work on it. And Michael, you are the new project manager for this project. And you've been working with OGN E directly, including their contractor. And you're going to give us an update on where we think we're at and when construction would start.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. On a lighter note, just kidding.
You haven't dumped anything in the drain, right?
I have not, no.
Okay.
We're going to talk a little bit about downtown streetlights, okay? We partnered with OGN E to replace eight blocks worth of these streetlights that are downtown in our downtown square area. A total of 54 new lights will be placed on Randolph, Broadway, Main, Grand, and Independence. Ninety-five of our existing lights are going to be coming out. And we're going to put in 45. And then we're going to be adding nine new ones to that. And so that's how you get to 54. Construction is scheduled to start in early September, and we hope to be done by early December. We're going to be putting out press releases in August, September, and then throughout the process as needed. The contractor is going to try to help accommodate our Thanksgiving holiday extravaganza that we have every year. They'll do everything they can to make sure that they're out of the way for those ceremonies. It may be a little bit bothersome to some of the folks down there. We're going to have some parking issues. We're going to have, you know, just things to work around with the equipment that's going to be in the downtown area. So just bear with us. Once we bring all these things to light and light up our downtown streetscape, it's going to be very nice. It's going to look awful, or awesome, sorry. Here's a map of the area. And running across the top from east-west, you'll see Randolph up there. And the purple swirls up there are the, the projections of the lights. And so those will be lined up. And then you'll see them running down Independence, around the square, around the post office and library, and then running down Grand. And that's your 54 new lights. Taking a closer look, this shows the, in the, the dark numerals, this is the ones that are going to be coming out. For example, in the upper left-hand corner, you've got eight coming out where there's four going in. You move to the right, once again, you have eight coming out, four going in. And then further to the east on Randolph, there will be three new ones there on the north side, and then three new ones on the south side.
And we're doing that because they're LEDs, right?
Yes.
We still get as much or more illumination.
Yes.
There was a light study done by OGN E that I think supports that we needed, we didn't need as many lights. We didn't need as many. These are going to be taller and
they're going to be cast one-sided. So they'll take care of that spread of the light. The next slide is going to show basically the type of light that we're going to be putting in down there. It's a Bristol Type III. It's an LED. Down there now, we've got mostly LED, but they're still larger, what we call corn cob bulbs. And the wind rattles these things around and they get loose. And then we got to go back and take them apart and screw them back together. And, and they're just real high maintenance because they're so old. So this is going to be a, a real nice change from what we're used to when we get it done. But this is kind of the, you know, the early stages. We're going to work through a few obstacles over the next few weeks and then, you know, hope again to get started in September. So any question?
I like that design a great deal. That almost has sort of an old-fashioned look to it, doesn't it?
Kind of, yeah. Not quite as colonial, if you will, as the ones that are down there now. Much easier to service. I think, believe these will be 14 feet high.
Okay.
So the poles on there are, they've got a real, a real nice powder coat finish. So all in all, they're going to, they're going to be, you know, they're going to look nice. The ones that are across the street to the west from Stride, Convention Hall, they're at the west parking lot, there's a row of six there. I believe those are OGN Es. And those are very similar to what we've got. So you can see them in person for the most part there.
There's some.
Different light spread.
There's some downtown that are more of an orangey color?
Correct.
Will those come out or do they belong to a business?
The ones that are on this map will come out. The ones that are orange that you're referring to could be because of the, the light color, not light color, but the temperature of the light. You know, like a 5,000 KW is going to have one, you know, brighter than a, a 2,500 KW. So those things, I'm not sure what light wattage we're going to have on these. It's going to be a low watt, high LED output. But to answer your question, I'd kind of need to know about what area because there are some of the lights back to the north on Independence that are owned by the Continental Tower or the other tower in that area. And there's some in their parking lot that match those. And some of those older, or the lights that are in that area, we're still going to be responsible for. That they're, they're not going to come out. We're going to take care of those. The Ballards, I believe, will probably stay. Don't know for sure. I think the decision hasn't been made on that yet. And we've retrofitted them. They are LED now. But getting the right color and the right temperature of a bulb today from what we were getting six years ago, completely different product offerings that are out there now. So it's been trouble and difficult to try to keep those things looking the same and matching. Just about the time we get where we think we're going, can't get that bulb anymore. You got to go with something else. And then they come with the switches and you can change them on the fly, you know, so.
The bulbs are intended to be cool white.
Cool.
And the effort Main Street's been working, I think with our team, with their volunteers over the years, to try to convert those yellow sodium ones or whatever they are to, to a cool white. That's kind of our standard. So that's what we're anticipating. Will there still be yellow ones? Yes. Like Michael's saying, because I think you had told me there's, and you may have said already, there's a lot of these, this only replaces the lights on that one mapped area. So lights anywhere else will still be the same lights if and until we're willing to spend some more funds to replace them. But I would think in conjunction with Main Street, they would, I think we all probably want to change them. I hope you like cool white because that's kind of what.
I do. I do.
Yep. We're going to light it up, telling you. It's going to look nice.
Good. Questions, comments? Nope?
Maybe we'll be talking in December and celebrate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item 3.3, update on projects completed using fiscal year 2024, 2025 grant funds for historic preservation and education. Dalton?
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Nervous. So historic preservation is a collective effort with the City of Enid and its residents to preserve our historic architectural or archaeological resources by, sorry, by increasing the public awareness of the value of our city's history. This process also involves the placement of monuments and markers on historic sites chosen by the Historic Preservation Committee, as well as giving advice or updating the current preservation program to further assist owners or residents within the historical district. Our main goal is to preserve history for everybody and for future generations and for the betterment of Enid. One of, there are a couple ways that we've been able to do this is we achieved a grant from the State Historic Preservation Office, and we developed a coloring book with their help, as well as the help of Enid Public Library and Enid High School to spark an interest for children to learn more about Enid's rich history. Community Development has also partnered with the developer to create an app for everyone of all ages to be able to make, take a historic walking tour of Enid's downtown area. With this app, everyone will get to see Enid's downtown history unfold before them. We're optimistic that we'll be able to release this app actually on June 6th or first Friday. So with the next few slides, we hope you guys enjoy the coloring book with what we've been able to create.
And who else is going to get the coloring book? Who, did you say? Did I?
Yeah, we're going to try and disperse it. First, I'd like to start with the library because Terry was a great help with that. And then get in contact with Enid Public Schools to help with the distribution for that as well. So.
Okay. It's intended for second graders, is that right?
Correct.
Dalton, tell us a little bit about the members that helped create this and some of the ideas that went into it and who we involved to help on the design for this?
Leroy also really helped push me on this a lot. He knew I liked history a lot. So he gave me the nudge to start doing this type of stuff. Kristen Day was a very big help. She loved to go over historical facts and stuff with me on downtown Enid. And then Terry, like I said, with the Public Library was a very big help for gathering a lot of the historical information. And then I apologize, I don't remember all the names from Enid Public High School, but they were such a big help whenever it came to creating the word search as well as picking out locations that could be on the book. So.
It went back and forth a few times. And we had elementary school teachers kind of telling us, well, we need to change a few words to make it where second graders can understand it a little better. So there was a little back and forth. It was a really fun project. And Dalton did a fantastic job leading it up.
I will say it was definitely a labor of love. So.
It's very cool.
But we hope you guys enjoy the coloring book and we hope a lot of the kids get an interest with Enid's history. Getting this position has definitely helped increase my interest in it. And with our walking tour, this is timeframe. This is just showing you a map of the route that we were able to create. The route starts at 301 South Grand, or you can park first, I'm sorry, at Stride Center. And then it'll start you at 301 South Grand at the ballpark. You'll work your way down Grand Street till you get to Randolph. And then you'll backtrack a little bit down Randolph to the gazebo in front of the old courthouse, proceed east, back down Randolph and up to Maple, and then connecting to, go down Maple till you get to Independence and straight back down. So I've gotten to do a demo with the developer and it was actually a really fun tour. The tour should only take roughly an hour or so, depending. So with where the old courthouse used to, or this is how the courthouse used to look. It's definitely changed quite a bit. I think it was kind of cool that on the fourth floor, there was a fire caused by the inmates. So that's what caused the renovations to help make it look like how it is today. And then on Maple Street, I, I wish this building was still up, but it's the Lowen Hotel. It was originally constructed here in 1907 and also housed a renowned performance theater. And what's fun with the app is you can transition the pictures of the past as well as with the present to compare how much they've greatly changed. We're very excited to present these projects to you guys and we hope you enjoy them as well as the rest of the City of Enid. So, thank you.
Wonderful job. I wouldn't like that anymore. That's amazing.
Great job. This is amazing.
Thank you. You guys have any questions for me?
No, we're passing a couple of the books around so everybody in the audience can see them. And then would you just make sure they come back over to this group as well?
They use a lot of crayons. This table does.
Eat them mostly.
And I want to thank you for your care and being very, very kind to the Old City Zoo because when you had passed the monkey pit back in the day, occasionally the monkeys would share some of their, they would share.
Thoughts.
I'll leave it at that. That's nice. This is wonderful.
Thank you guys very much.
Amazing job.
Well, I'm excited to see those out to the kids. So.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
That's great.
Okay, item 3.4, Call Lake Water Supply Program Financial Update. Ms. Crawford?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Time again to give an update. It's been three months since the last one. So we're going to update on the last quarter where we are cumulatively on the program as a whole. So all of this data is through May 30th so that I could get cut off for this meeting. So we don't have interest for May, but everything else through the end of May is included in these numbers. This is again, the history of the collections, both what we've budgeted and the actuals that we've collected by year. For the current fiscal year, we have collected $10.8 million. We're budgeted for $9.19 million. So we have exceeded our budget by 1.6 million or 17.8% for the year. Again, slight trend up. What's driven that increase this year was again, a one-time large use sales tax that was turned in. And if we remove that, we would actually be at an increase of 3.86% this year over last year. So a little more in line with that. But again, we are exceeded. We still have one month of collections. So that will just continue to increase. We've already hit in excess of where we budgeted this year for the cost sales tax.
Aaron, it looks like we usually do have more actual than what we budget. Do we go ahead and pay that towards the debt? Or do we set on that in the event that we don't, if we have a year that we don't meet our number?
No, it all stays in there. There's not prepayment penalty, or prepayment allowed in those agreements with OGN E. And so it's held and invested so that we can then make future payments with it. In the end, what will happen is there'll be less subsidy that's needed from utility revenues to make those payments because this will not accumulate enough to make all of the debt payments for call in the end.
Okay.
This next slide is showing that whole amount that we've collected over the time. And that $79 million that we've collected in this 1% sales tax, we've also earned an additional $1.5 million in interest over that period on those funds. And so of that $80.6 million, we have paid out in loan payments, 68 million of that. And we have $12.6 million sitting available to make future payments. Right now, of that $12.6 million there in green, we have $10 million invested in laddered treasury bill. We have three different ones, a $5 million and then two that are 2.5 that ladder out to match the maturity to when our debt payments are due upcoming. And then, so the other 2.6 is sitting in cash and needs to remain in cash to be able to make the next payments that are due on September for all of our loans. In September, we have a total of a little over $10 billion that's due in debt payments. This just shows the history of the drawdowns of all of the funding. We've taken out loans of 334.1 million. We've taken out loans of $334.1 million in loans over the entire program, from Phase 1 through where we are today. We also earned interest of $8.2 million on those funds, so we have a total of $342 million. As of the end of May, we've drawn down $319 million of that, and we have $23 million left remaining on the program to draw down. And this gives you a snapshot of each of those five loans that we have through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, the original loan balance, what we've made in principal and interest payments, any loan origination fees, and how much is still outstanding to be paid on each of those loans. We have 8% of the principal of the loans paid off at this point. And again, all five of the loans do have principal and interest payments due in September, and it is $10.2 million in payments that will be due September 15th. The other two sources of funding that we have for this program is there is a congressional funding that was passed for $4 million. Stephen, our grant writer, continued to work with Oklahoma Department of HUD to get through some of the additional information they need. Largely, we're waiting on some environmental clearing items right now. We did have some people assigned, and our person who was there and their boss have both moved on, and so we're waiting to get assigned a new person, so we can get that wrapped up and get access to those funds. So we're actively working that, and we'll continue to follow up to try and get access as soon as possible. And then the American Rescue Plan Act, which was funds that were given directly by the federal government to the city during COVID, all of those funds have now been dispersed to pay invoices to Garni during the process of construction. And then the last slide here is just again, the budget for the program as a whole. Whole budget, $344.7 million. We've paid out $330.8 million to date. We have $13.57 encumbered under contracts to vendors. We have one, a little over a million left to pay Garver. We have $12.3 left for Garni construction, and then $160,000 on other ancillary contracts that go along with the new plants. We have 287 that's uncommitted, $287,000 still in the remaining budget, and we still need to work on all the furnishings and equipment and other things that will be needed in the new water treatment plant. So some of that was included in the new budget that you approved, but some of it will come out of this as part of the startup. So we'll be working with what interest we have to add to the program budget, to be able to afford, to add in some of those things to the program. What questions can I answer for you on where we're at with the Call Lake financials?
I just wanted to clarify, you said we've paid 8% towards the principal?
Yes, eight, so far.
That's not, that's not a big number.
I'll take it, it's progress.
It's 8%, we haven't even turned on the tap yet.
Correct.
Right? I mean, got it paid down by eight. So of that 22 or 3 million that's left to draw down, and what you were just rattling off on Garni, Garver, and encumbrance, does that fit within the 22 million, or 23, whatever that number was?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
This is the most closely monitored financial project we've ever done.
All right, questions, additional questions or comments?
Just that you do an amazing job.
Thank you.
And numbers hurt my head, so I just applaud you for what you do.
Erin always makes it happen, doesn't she?
Yes, she does.
Yes, so thank you so much, and thank you for your team that does so much of this. All right, our next item, I'm excited about. Item 3.5, Municipal Government Discussion with the Leadership Greater Enid Youth Program. So yeah, welcome tonight. We did this last year, and I left just amazed on the depth of the questions. I was starting to wonder if I knew the answers to some of them whenever they would ask. So I don't know if we have a system, but I thought maybe we'd start by just having each one of them, Ashley, or you can start and have them all come up and just tell us who they are, and where they go to school, and if they have any questions they want to ask us. We don't know the answer, we'll just make it up.
Yep.
Hi, I'm George Vega, I go to EHS.
You go to where?
Enid High School.
Enid High School, okay.
I'm in the 11th grade, and that's all there really is to me. I wasn't really expecting to come here, I didn't know much about the schedule, so I couldn't study. Yeah.
It's a surprise.
This is all a surprise for me, so.
That's fine. So what do you think so far?
It's, it's a little overwhelming.
We think so too. This is how the sausage is made.
We went to Tyson earlier today. Fun experience, yeah.
Chicken patties, full circle.
No real question for you, but you know, it's a cool experience to have and be able to see all this. For us, it's a cheap price, it's only $75, but it's nice. And that's all, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for being here. Don't be afraid to speak, Frank's pretty old and is hard of hearing, so.
Catch you towards this ear right here.
Hi, I'm Elliot Kroska, I go to Chisholm, I'll be a junior this year. Yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, you have any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We must be doing a really good job then.
So do you have any desire to be in city government or state government someday?
I don't think so.
Only took 57 minutes to convince her of this.
Okay, you didn't pour any chemicals into our drains, did you?
Nope.
I'm gonna ask each one of you whenever you come up here, because I'm looking for them. All right, well, I'm glad that you're here tonight, and if you think of a question, you can come back up.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna guess you're from OBA.
Just maybe. My name is Maddie Edwards, and I'm from OBA, and I'll be a junior. Yeah, I was wondering, okay, so I don't really know what y'all are, but there's obviously like fun parts and like not fun parts of a job, so like what's your most enjoyable part, and then what's like the part that sucks?
Well, I guess I'll start. You know, I think it's all fun. I feel like we get to make a huge impact in a very quick amount of time, and sometimes in a 30-day period, we can, we can make change happen. And I think it's fun whenever we do things like the Call Water Project, that's been a lot of headaches, I know it has, but our community will have water for the next 75 years. So when we're all long and gone, and they turn on the faucet, that's because we passed all that, we made that happen, and staff made it happen. So for me, it's the impact that we get to make that sometimes people don't even realize what's happening. So that's me, any of the rest of y'all?
I'll jump in. So I am the newest commissioner, I've only been on for less than a month, so I don't have any negatives yet. But I will say, I agree with Mayor Mason, I think it's important to have a voice at the table where the decisions are being made, and be able to influence, you know, the future of your city. So that's been my favorite part, and of course, working with this great team of people in Enid that truly care about us moving forward, so we're glad you're here tonight.
Do y'all get to be friends after all the meetings?
Do, yeah. I would say we're all friends.
Yeah, so far, so far.
Thank you.
But they're not young.
Hi, my name's Michael Padilla, and I go to Enid High, and I'm gonna be a 11th grader. And my question is, do you guys ever come upon disagreements? And if you do, how do you guys work through it?
That's easy, majority rules.
Another part is just respecting other people's opinions, and being okay saying, okay, you've convinced me that maybe I didn't have the right opinion on that. So I think respect is a huge part of it.
Yeah, I would like to say that I've served on the Enid City Commission once before, and we had, how shall I phrase this, a slightly more tumultuous arc, and sometimes it really was unpleasant among commissioners. And I really do respect the fact that this is one of those things where I think there's just the common goal of what's trying to do best, and we can disagree, and we can hash things out, and it's, and that way things get done. So this is a much better vibe than I've experienced in the past.
I also think if you look, and if you knew everyone up here, personalities are very, very different. And I like that personally, because there are some up here with different interests than I have. And so they're passionate about different topics, and they make sure that we keep that in front of the commission, and that we take action on that. If it was something I wasn't really interested in, it'd only be my programs that I was pushing through. So, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, we study these topics. Sometimes when you read a newspaper article, or see something online, it is a short blurb about something that is usually not factual. Number two, certainly isn't conclusive. We get a lot of data, I mean, look, look, look right here, and this isn't all of it. I've got another notebook right here, I've got a tablet with everything, in which everyone has the same thing. So I always say the amount of study that goes into it before, so it's not all about emotion like it is sometimes on Facebook, right? We've actually studied the information. So it's easier to come to a conclusion. And, and as Commissioner Stallings was saying, we have a magical number up here, and it's four. You know, four votes wins. But if you watch, and I think it's very important, because you watch some other municipalities, this isn't true, we're almost all 7-0 votes. And I don't, I don't point that out because we just go along to get along, but we've studied it, I think we understand it, and I think we're all headed the same direction. Sometimes we have a little different path to get there, but that's okay. So I like that we have different personalities. So, did we answer your question?
Yes.
Any other commissioners want to add to that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
My name is Jenna Donaldson, I am going to be a senior at Drummond High School. I'm honestly so impressed that you guys have comprehended all of that information in however long we've been here. There were so many numbers, and so, I was blown away. My mind's going blank. What's the most challenging part of all of this? Like, is this, I'm sure it's stressful, but what is the most challenging part of your job as a commissioner?
I think trying to disseminate the truth. We want to be very, very transparent on everything we do. And I just think sometimes individuals think that there's always something going on, you know, that no one knows about. There's none of that. We really don't see each other much until we have meetings. And so I think just trying to build a relationship with the general public, that they believe us, that they believe that we want good things for Enid, to me, that's the hardest piece. And it aggravates me when we explain something, they go, I don't believe that. Really, really, because I've just studied this for three days, right? So I think just trying to build that relationships can get me a little agitated sometimes, not that I ever get agitated, right, Dr. Mack?
Never.
Never. What do y'all think? Anybody else?
Well, I think it's kind of along that same line. When we get into this, I kind of knew coming into it what it could be like, because I was on the school board, but when you run for an office like this, you are putting your character out there to be assassinated online, because every decision we make, somebody's gonna question it, somebody's gonna question our integrity, they're gonna question if our parents were ever married. There's just a lot of, a lot of people talking that don't have the background, haven't done the study, haven't hashed it out sometimes among each other, and they're making decisions about our character based on one little blurb that they saw in the newspaper, or one little blurb that somebody made on their own Facebook post. So we are unpaid people up here, we're giving our time because we love our city, and we think we can make a difference. And it's not just the big things like Mayor Mason talked about, it's the little things like an elderly couple calling me the other night and saying, can you come over to my house? We've got this issue going on, I want to see if you can help us with it. That's a big part of the reward from this, is knowing that you took some pressure off of an elderly couple that needed some help.
And that is a big issue with that elderly couple. It is their big issue.
So I love that side of it, I love the people's side of it.
Well, and I'd like to go back to a guy who was a mentor to me. I got to start in radio when I was in high school here, and the gentleman, who was the general manager, Pat Murphy, a World War II fighter pilot, and I was just going from junior to senior high school, and he cornered me one day, and I was talking about something without really knowing who I was talking about with a city issue. And he said, you really aren't a part of a community until you get involved. If you're just going home, if you're just today looking on Facebook, if you're not actually in the trenches participating, you're not really part of the solution or your town. And I think it's very vital to do that, whether it's what we do here, or help out with a nonprofit, or be involved in a new organization like you kids are. It's good stuff, and you need to do it.
I think one of the biggest challenges I've ever had on the city commission is the management of my time, because I had to remember that I have a family. I'm involved in other organizations, and also I needed to take some time out for myself. You know, when I got into it, it was overwhelming. And as I began to learn the process, it got a little easier. Now I can manage it, because I've been on this for eight years. So the management of my time is very, very important. And also, you have to be strong-willed. There's a lot of people that tell you you're doing a good job, and there's a lot of people that, you know, tell you how they would do it. So you have to learn how to throw the ball back in their court, and ask them, what would you do if you was in my position? Most normally, it gets silent. One other thing I'd like to bring out, we just managed our budget, passed our budget. Well, a lot of times what I do, I go back and I compare where we were when I first started, and where we are now. In the city of Enid, there's almost close to a $20 million growth in sales tax revenue when I first got on the city commission, back in 2017 versus now, because I went back and I referenced years before. So if I wanted to be a part of something, I want to give the community and myself my best foot forward. And I was always taught by my father, if you're not gonna do it right, don't do it at all. So when I got on the commission, I knew that I was gonna do the best job that I could possibly do. But the most challenging thing was the management of my time.
Commissioner Roberts, I think you will say something?
Yeah, for me, the most challenging, but also the most enjoyable, it's a double-edged sword for me, is I feel like I'm constantly repeating myself and constantly explaining how everything operates and works, and, but I also enjoy being able to, to share that knowledge and pass that on to other people, because we are all normal citizens. We all started not knowing how the whole process went through as in-depth as it does. But now that we do have a greater understanding, I think it opens your eyes to, I guess, be a little bit more forgiving of certain things, as opposed to people who don't know how the government operates within the municipal government. So I've enjoyed learning everything and being able to pass that on to others.
Val, some of that one? Master?
I'm a third-term city commissioner. I was the city commissioner before you were born. born, in the 1900s, or 1990-something, and I've done it three times, so I'm not really smart, because you just heard all, you just heard all the things that everybody has to give up to be a city commissioner, and they're all right, but probably that, one of the most difficult things is when we get people that stand at that podium that you're at that are underserved, that don't have a lot, and they've done something that may be their fault or maybe not their fault, and we have to make a decision that adversely affects them, in some circumstances, even maybe tear their house down because their house is damaged, and they don't have enough money to fix it, that goes pretty deep in your soul when you have to make a vote to do something like that. So it's a, it's a good job, but it's a tough job when you start making decisions like that. We talked about a decision earlier in the day about our wastewater plant, we don't realize how important that wastewater plant is, when you go to the bathroom and flush your commode, you just assume it's gone and it's okay. Well, if that plant down there is not working right, that's not really the case, it's not gone and it's not okay, so there's a lot of things we have to deal with. City fathers set the governance up a long time ago of how this city's gonna be run with the city commissioner system. Not all cities are run like this, but I think this works pretty well, and I've served with a lot of people up here in the three terms that I've had, so we've had a few people that didn't really enjoy it as much as others, and they didn't stay very long, but I think it's a good system.
All right, anything else?
No.
Other questions?
No, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
I'm Addison Fitz, I go to Chisholm, and I'll be a sophomore this year. What's like the most fun topic you've gotta like discuss, like something that didn't bore you or something?
You think some of this bores us? Because you're right. It does. Well, I like projects, I like big projects, I like economic development, we have a great economic development director here, and a great team that, I like when we're bringing business to Enid, I like when we're bringing new employees that are buying houses and going to the grocery store and buying groceries. I just don't think everyone fully understands that that's what drives the engine. If we don't buy product here, and if we don't generate sales tax revenue, all those dollars that our CFO has to have to pay, not just that $10 million that she's gotta pay, $10.2 million in September, that's just one bill, that's just one bill, she pays all of them, all the payroll, everything, so to me, it's projects, I like to see economic growth, because I think it generates this revenue that drives our community to be better and better and better. So that being said, right now, I'm really liking talking about the ballpark, the new sports complex, because I think it's going to generate so many people, so much attention to Enid in such a positive way, that I don't think we can fully embrace that yet, but we will. And then the other thing I like to call Water Project, I've already talked about that, I won't do it again, but that has a lasting legacy, not for me or any of these commissioners, but for Enid, that we're taking care of people that haven't even been born yet, so I like those type projects, but I'm sure everybody's got their own, their own things.
I like the quality of life projects that we do, and that we continually invest in, like the trail system, not everybody gets out and walks on the trail, or takes their kids out in the stroller on the trail, or rides their bikes, but there's a lot of people that do. My house is backed up to the trail, and it is constantly being used. Not everybody golfs, but you know, we take care of our golfing parks, and for some people, that's the way they get away from the stress of life, and so I think it's always gonna be important that we take care of quality of life, because life is hard, and we need that time to get away and enjoy, enjoy time with our families, so.
Well, I have two things I like, number one, I have the attention span of a gnat, so this actually forces me to focus, you know, and I like things like that, where you really just can't drift away, you have to focus in on it, but the other thing I continually have always enjoyed about this, going back to the last time, I said, "I'm a junkie for enthusiasm and passion," and when people get up and they're so into their topics or something they're doing, I just find that fascinating, because when somebody is really into what they're doing, I respect that, and I love, even if I don't fully understand what they're telling me, I love to listen to it, so I love, and you get that so often from the folks we work with down here, that they're so fired up for what they're doing, and I just find that just, that's addictive, I really, I really like and admire it.
I like sending the positive and great results from making hard decisions. We have a lot of hard decisions that we have to make, and everyone doesn't agree with the decisions that we make, but at the end of the day, when it comes out, great, it makes you really feel good, when we come together collectively as a group, and we make those hard decisions, and a lot of things that we have to keep internally before it's time to expose it, then it's like sending a seed plant, and then bam, you have this big old bouquet of flowers, you know, but the process, going through the process, I enjoy sending positivity, and sending us being successful, and it's not about us being successful, it's about the whole city of Enid and the surrounding towns of Enid being successful, so I really enjoy that part of it, sometimes I lose sleep at night because I'm passionate about it, but it's worth it.
This is an easy answer, or an easy out, I enjoy when we're able to solve an issue, or we're able to finish a project that the citizens have been asking for, things like that, it's like, okay, we did our job, so I enjoy those.
And I would agree with her, the big projects are the fun part, that's when we get to do something and make a difference.
All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'm Stephanie, I go to Chisholm, and I'll be a sophomore. My question is, what made you decide to run for office?
Say that one more time?
What made you decide to run for office?
Oh, let's see, what made me decide that, well, my wife doesn't like it when I stay home too much, but that didn't, I'm kidding, that's, you know, I think I've always looked for an outlet to make impact, and I know that seems weird, but I just, and I'll tell each one of y'all, you're in the leadership, greater any leadership, but you can make a difference.
Yes, you can.
The bar is low, because there's not a lot of people that step up and step over it, so I don't know, I think it was probably just that I wanted to make an impact, I wanted to, you know, someday it's important to me, when I've got two little grandsons, I want them to drive down the road and said, I want them to say, "I think my grandpa helped do that right there." If I'm, man, that's all I need right there, that's all I need, so I was just looking for something to make an impact, and I think we are, I think we are, but that's what drives it for me.
Yeah, I will also say, okay, I will also say that part of the reason I decided to run is, over the years, and not this specific commission, I have not agreed with some of the decisions that were made, and I feel like if you're gonna complain about it, you need to step up and use your voice and sit at the table and help make those better decisions, so I think that was really important for me to be able to stand up for what I believed in, and this was a really great way to do it, and to make that impact, so like Mayor Mason said, I would encourage all of you to get involved and, you know, in whatever is your passion, and if it's municipal government, we're always happy to chat with you guys about that, so.
You know, something I'll remind y'all, so when you see things out there and you wanna get involved, don't just point out the problems, we all see the problem, what we need are solutions, and that's what we have to come up with, and when I say "we," it also includes city staff, and I wanted to back up, whenever I held up those papers and I said, "We go through all this," that was all put together by city staff that works in their specific area of expertise, that researches, that puts it all together and then gets it in front of us, so it, when I say it is a team and a big team, it is, and we are so fortunate in the city of Enid to have the staff that we do, not, I get to go to a lot of mayor functions, and I hear a lot of conversation, I just sit there and listen, because I'm going, "That's not us." We have money in the bank, and we have great staff all the way through, wouldn't you say, Gerald?
Yes, sir.
And I just, it makes it easy to be up here, easier, I'll put it that way, so, I don't know if we answered your question or not, but that's all you're gonna get.
I have something else to say on that. I grew up all around Enid, started at Manchester, when they closed our school, bust to Wakita, moved to Medford, moved to Fairview, Colley, Genalva, and all the time I'm living in those other communities, I couldn't wait to get to Enid, and specifically to the Meadows, because we would drive by the sign at the Meadows, there's a bright golden sun, or bright golden haze on the Meadows, and so that's where I live, and so when I got to Enid, and I've been here 40 years now, I would see and hear negative stuff, people just saying horrible things about Enid, and I would just think, "That's not right," and so I couldn't wait to get a seat up here, to just do what I could, to change the image that some people have about Enid, because we got a lot of great things going on, we got a lot of great people in our community, and we need to shine the light on that and get rid of some of the darkness that's out there, so, and you guys have a chance to do that as well.
To do that.
Yep, yes, I do.
Me, I had a passion for politics since I was 13, and I've moved all over the country, and Enid is where I call home, I've been here for about 13 years, 12, 13 years, and I've always wanted to get involved, but I wasn't from here, so I didn't know how I could, and an opportunity presented itself, and I literally just am like, "Well, if nobody else will, I will," and nobody else did, and so that's how I got in this position, and I've loved it.
Thank you. Did everybody get a question that wanted to, I didn't skip over anyone, did I? Okay.
Mayor, I've got a quotation that I've seen recently that I think fits, I'm not gonna get it exactly right, I'm gonna paraphrase, but it goes something like this, and I think it applies to every single one of you, everybody in here and everybody in town, it's something like, "I used to sit around and think about, 'Somebody should do something about this or that,' and then I figured out I was somebody, and I was blown away that that was a quote attributed, now I haven't fact-checked it, and it came off of Facebook, so it could be incorrect."
It's gotta be true.
It claimed to be JFK, and so some of you guys probably will know President John F. Kennedy, if you haven't, then you probably need to dig into your history, but I thought that was a fitting quote, because you all are somebody, so.
So I'll close out like this, just, first of all, thank you for being here, thank you for being in this group, don't be afraid to be a leader, don't be afraid to step up, open your mouth, if you don't, the wrong person could, right? I also wanna mention that Commissioner Roberts had come up with the thought that we needed to be able to go into schools, into their history classes, their civic classes, and just let them know what it is that we do, we spent $190 million every, was our budget this year, on your behalf, on your behalf, so there's no charge to that, so when y'all get back in school next year, we're happy to do that, a couple of us will show up, I promise you, and then you can just answer all the questions in your setting instead of ours on anything that you wanna talk about, but we go over just kind of some of the highlights about what our responsibilities and the form of government that we are. So with that being said, it's 6:24, I'm going to adjourn, and we will start again at 6:30.